Okay, gonna go ahead and call the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Present.
Trustee Saturn.
Present.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Graffia.
Present.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Present. Okay, any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Melissa Kayer, I was wondering, can you put the annual financial report on the website for public viewing?
The annual financial report is on the state treasurer, is it state treasurer or state comptroller? I can't remember state. Yeah, state comptroller's website, we have to upload it to there, so everything is there. We can send you a link, we could probably send you a link to it.
Okay.
Reach out to Paul, we could send you a link to it.
Also, Mr. Dale Nierdowski, since you're on the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District of Illinois Board of Trustees also, and your group doesn't have it on their website either, can you put the annual financial report on their website?
Uh, they basically have the same roles.
Okay, I've been checking all the property taxing bodies, and they all have been putting their annual tax, annual financial reports on their websites for easily viewing, so it would be nice if you followed the same standards.
Appreciate the suggestion, if you want to consider that, George. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. All right, you've received two sets of minutes, one from September 25th and one from October 23rd. Any discussions, questions, or suggestions about those minutes?
I just have one, but now I have to find it. It was about, okay, the first set of minutes from September 25th, last page, F, the guard replacement, not a big deal, but it says trustee Saturn stated the township should err on the side of safety, that should just be err on the side of safety, E-R-R.
Oh, the last page on F, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other changes or questions? All right, can I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes with that change?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Graffia.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, reports assessor.
You have my written report, however, to add to that, if you notice the last paragraph, we had gotten unofficial word that the Skokie Satellite Office for the assessor would close December 1st. We have yet to get total confirmation, but that looks like it is going to happen, and we were also notified last week that the Satellite Office in Rolling Meadows for the Cook County Board of Review is now closed. All Satellite Offices for the Board of Review will be closed, they will only be functioning out of the county building. This will affect us in the coming years as far as getting paper documentation to them, and we're going to have to work with them to see what's going to be the most efficient way to do that. Certainly, taking the train downtown is not a great way, and we're gonna have to look to see if they're going to make some accommodation for us. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
When the satellite, the Skokie and the Rolling Meadows, the same thing, or is one's for?
No. They closed the Satellite Office for the Assessor's Office in the Rolling Meadows Courthouse several years ago. However, the Satellite Office for the Board of Review still existed there, so we were in a position that late filings on the closing day of appeals, we could run over there and make sure that our taxpayers got in under the deadline. What I'm concerned about now is anything that comes in, whether they're looking for a postmark on the day we close, if they're going to give us some sort of leeway, some sort of grace period, so that our taxpayers are not further inconvenienced. The assessor's satellite, that's the only one in the northern area, and that is going to be closed December 1st.
Thank you. Any other questions for Connie? Okay, clerk's report?
I don't have a written report, there's no FOIAs, there's no legislative issues that we need to address this time. I will follow up on one issue, which is on the videotaping. I want to thank trustee Saturn for helping us resolve a misunderstanding between the village and the township, but we've talked to, I've talked to Ross at Oak Grove Village, the audio director, they're, they're, they're suggesting, or they, they put forward that if we at some point here remodel the, if this goes through and we remodel the Public Works Facility, Elk Grove Township Video Works Facility, they would recommend that we install a videotaping capability, an audiotaping capability in that facility, and that they then will help us manage that for a minimal cost or no cost. In the meantime, they initially said they felt the current arrangement was very competitive for us in terms of quality and cost, however, Ross said he did want to come over here and take a look at it, which he did last week, and said he would get me a quote by December 1st, by the end of this week. It would probably involve a three-hour setup, the meeting, and then a one-hour teardown. They would need to probably use four staff members, they'd have to bring their studio in the box over, and we would have to buy microphones to carry this out. He'll give me a quote, and he feels, like he said, he feels they're not going to be dramatically better than what we're doing right now. The current arrangements we have are through December at 1,700 a meeting, though our current operator has indicated that if we go 18 months, he will drop it to 1,500 a meeting. We could also just go back to audio, but they have an audio system which will function in a way that's clear and will be able to be used both by our constituents, but also by me. That'd probably be somewhere between, the work I've done is on the low end, 2,500, 3,000, on the higher end, 5,000, 6,000, so.
But wait one second, if it's audio only, how much per meeting? Did he say?
No, it's, there we would buy our own system.
Oh, okay.
We would buy our own system, and we'd have to, we'd have to run it ourselves.
Okay.
And you said?
And that would not be, you know, the other issue with that is we could buy that system, we could install it here, we would have to manage it, I'm not sure what's involved in managing it, and then when we move, it wouldn't be transferable, really, I mean, because we, if we were putting a system in over there, we're gonna put a good, better system.
And how much did you say the audio alone costs?
Audio alone would be between 3,000 and 6,000. They quoted us 5,000 to 6,000, but I mean, if we cut some things out, and we did, got to a real basic, I suppose it'd be maybe around 3,000. And then, I don't know, I don't know what it would take to manage it, to run it, I don't know if we have that capability in-house, and then, like I said, it would probably pretty well, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be good enough to take over to the new facility.
All right, so the point is, though, that he, by the end of the week, is going to give you what the quote would be?
A quote for, a quote for doing this, starting in January or February, yeah.
Okay, and will you email us and let us know?
Yeah, when I, when I get it, I'll let the board know what he, he's gonna, he said he'd have it by the end of the week, and at first he had, at first he'd said, well, no, I mean, we're not gonna do any better, we've got all these people we're gonna have to use, blah, 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 why don't you just, we'll take a look at this when you get into your new facility, but then he said, okay, I'll come over, and I said, I'd like to have something, give me something so I can, I can, just so we've done our due diligence. So he's gonna give me something.
Okay.
Said it? Yep, that's it.
Any questions for George? Excuse me. Okay. Highway Commissioners Report, Art.
I submitted my written report, there's not really much anything going on right now at the 50-degree temperatures, so.
What was that last part, Art? Sorry.
We're in between seasons right now, at the 50-degree temperatures.
Okay. Any questions for Art? Okay, thanks, Art. Okay, my report, you have the standard reports for General Assistance, Employment Center, Transportation, and Financials, a couple of other things to add. I sent an email this morning, I got a call from Paul Peacock, our administrator, on Friday, that his mom passed away, that's the reason he is not here, so just keep that in mind the next time you see him. So, what else here? Happy to announce that at the Toy Convention, our General Assistance Director, Lisa Menick, received Case Worker of the Year. I am working on, I was crunching the numbers, Lisa was collecting a lot of information with the help of Erica since the last meeting, I was still crunching numbers this morning, so I'll send you a nice and neat report by email this week, but I know some of the trustees were asking about the cost benefit, as far as the food donations and staff going to pick up food. So we ran the numbers since last February to kind of give a picture of multiple seasons across multiple years. Elk Grove Township has received $111,472 in food donations of that, Elk Grove Township has received $57,228 that we have to go pick up, so donations that we have to go pick up. That includes, which we don't do anymore, but Starbucks, Meyer, Aldi, Little Caesars. The travel reimbursement during that time was $496, which is, comes out to point, 0.8% and then the payroll.
0.8%.
What's that?
0.8%.
0.8%. And that, you know, if you include the payroll expense, although I would argue that it's part of their job, so, but even if you include that, $3,406, that comes out to 6%, so to pick up 50, just over $57,000 worth of food, it comes out to $3,900, or just under 7%, so.
7% of what? The value?
The value, of the value of the food, right. And then, we're obviously opening up bids tonight, wanted to give our broker time to analyze that, so I wanted to see what the availability, I need to call for a special meeting, hopefully for next week, the reason is, we, just, our broker working with some of the bidders, obviously they exchange information, one of the bidders, one of the anticipated bidders, one of the contingencies that we expect to see is a need to close by the end of the year, so we wanted to be able to analyze the bids and come back and potentially vote on them, just in case we wanted to accept that bid and move forward, obviously a time crunch now, so I wanted to see what the board's availability would be next Monday or Wednesday.
I'm gonna be out of town.
Gonna be out of town.
I'd be available either day.
How about everybody else?
I can do it.
How about, are you back in town the following week, Andrea?
Yes, I'll be back on the 10th.
How would Monday or Wednesday of that week look? And Steve, does that give us enough time?
I don't think we have enough time to close, but 10, when I close by the year end, that's where we, I can turn the analysis around by tomorrow, if you have any questions.
Either the 11th or 13th is fine with me.
Would you be opposed if we met next week, Andrea, without you here?
Well.
I don't want to leave anybody out.
There's nothing I can do about it, I'll be in the Caribbean, so.
All right, what did you say?
I'd like you to cancel your trip.
What did you say, Bob? What day would work for you? Next week?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, either of those.
Sue Allen?
Wednesday's good.
All right, I'll call the meeting for Wednesday.
The 6th, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Same time.
Same time, 7:00. Okay, any questions for me?
I just have one question.
Yes.
On the employment office.
Yes.
Where is it shown one of his seminars, like if I want to direct people to his seminars?
We have, we can send you a list of upcoming dates, I'll have Lisa get that to me, and they're on the township calendar, but I'll, I'll blast that out to you.
The seminars are here.
Seminars are here. We have, we have had them on-site before, when we do the job, job fairs, but I'll send you a list of any upcoming events we have.
Is it always on Tuesday and Thursday when he's here already, or?
I don't believe so, I think it changes.
No, you see, he's here Tuesday and Thursday.
But he's had some in the evenings, and I'm just trying to remember what they are.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Have the township website, you put it?
We can put, well, I'll email it out, we can also put it on the website as well.
Where has it been up to this point?
Typically here, but sometimes we do it on-site, if, like I said, if at a job fair, we'll do like a how-to-work-a-job fair, like before.
But how did you publish, how'd you post it? That's what I think she was asking, how did you post the information?
How have we posted them before?
The information, yeah, so people knew where to go.
We've sent out press releases before, I'd have to go back and look to see, I know he sends out, Bob sends them out to all his clients, I will find out where we've published them before.
Okay. And our website is what she's suggesting, okay.
I know you have a group of pastors, that's one of your groups that means, that might be a good group to send this information to.
Yeah, I mean, I know we blasted out to EGTC, I mean, it's a good suggestions, I mean, we do it to our internal list, I'm just trying to remember where we posted, if we've had, if we've posted on the website in the past, but I'll, I'll look at all, all the avenues that we've used, and I can, I'll include that, and then, any suggestions for further avenues, please let me know, we're always looking to get the word out to more people. Okay, any other questions for me? Okay, there's no correspondence, old business, so videotaping of board meetings, yeah, I mean, I, I met with Ray and Ross as well, we were meeting on another topic, but we talked about videotaping, and George covered everything we talked about as well, so.
You know, when I talked to Ross, he said, of course, they were just going to cover their costs, so it would not be a large amount, he made it sound like it would be pretty reasonable compared to what we're saying.
Well, he told me that, what he told me was that you've got a very reasonable price, price in terms of quality right now, and that they would need four people that they would have to use for approximately, well, approximately, it could be six hours, and then they'd have their studio in a box.
Seems surprising.
And the other thing that, that he mentioned too, that he, they're gonna, I mean, he's gonna try to give us a very reasonable price, but also they don't want to be dramatically competing with private sector either. I mean, they'll, they will give us a good price, but they, they want it to be fair, not really.
Right, right. Well, we'll see what he says.
Yeah.
So do we want, I'm assuming we just want to table this until we get the quote?
Yeah.
All right, so can I just have a motion to table it, too? Moved by trustee Graffia?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Authorization for payroll bills. Any, any questions about any of the bills?
Well, the attorney sent copies of the bills that he sent here.
Which attorney?
Jim Kelly.
Okay.
And they weren't in the pile, so.
Okay. I've, I've seen one bill from Matusiewicz and Kelly, so I don't know if there's been other bills.
Well, here's two.
But why wasn't it in the bills?
So, the only bill that I've seen was a month or two before Board took action on the...
Oh, you're saying the one that's dated September 26th?
Right, and that was...
Right, that's only 112 bucks.
Okay.
So I don't even care, you know, I'll pay that, I don't care, but this one was for 2/25 and sent November 27th.
November 27th?
Yeah, it's dated today, so you wouldn't have gotten it, but this is the only one you saw? Okay, then I'll just...
I'm still looking, I mean, I'm, until, I just put this out there, until you can cite the statute or the case law that allows trustees to hire an attorney, and under what circumstances?
Well, that was already determined, and I will have...
That's fine, I just, all I need...
I'll have my attorney call your attorney.
No, no, all I need to know is the authority that I have to pay the bill, that's all I'm asking for.
Well, it was all discussed, and we voted on it.
No, I mean, you can, the board can take a lot of action, I mean, you can vote on anything you want, doesn't mean that it's lawful, so I need, I need case law, or I need statute.
I will tell Mr. Kelly to contact your attorney.
That's all I'm asking, he's, well, Jason's the township attorney, but Mr. Kelly can contact me as well.
Okay, I will have him contact you.
The bill from the 27th, we just said, the bill from the September 26th?
He sent one September 26th.
25th?
September 26th for 112, 1,250.
September 26th, and that's the one that you said you're doing?
Well, I'll do it, because when did we pass this? We passed this in...
After that, yeah.
October.
Are you sure?
I don't know.
It was after, because the service on that, the service on that bill was for August.
Yeah.
It wasn't the date of the bill, it was for the service that was in August.
All right, okay. And then this one, I will make sure that he calls your attorney then, and gives you...
Okay, he's not my attorney, he is the township attorney, but Mr. Kelly can contact me if he would like.
It was passed in September 25th.
September 25th.
Okay. Any questions about any of the bills on the line?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the bills on the payroll as presented?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski.
I beg your pardon?
Uh, trustee Graffia, sorry.
You guys look so much alike.
We do.
Uh, trustee Graffia was seconded there. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, new business, let me see here, in your board packet, there is a Resolution 2017-18, Resolution declaring the Township Chelmsford's property a surplus property, so this is just a technical matter, if we're going to do, this is obviously different than a private sale, and we're transferring property, so when we do that, we have to declare the property surplus, so any questions about the resolution?
I'm concerned about the fact that we promised to fund the daycare center through March 31st, and that they could stay in the building until March 31st, and I'm wondering that if we declare this as surplus property now, is this going to preclude us from doing so?
No, this, this, this is separate, this is separate from the contract to transfer the actual property, so we'll actually have to have an intergovernmental agreement, property transfer, so that's a separate document. I will reiterate, I've talked to Annette from the daycare center, I know this board is committed, I remain committed to that date of, that the, any new owner would not have access to the property, whether or not they purchased the property before April 1st, they would not have access to the property until April 1st. So there's a number of ways to do that, we could actually include that language.
In the contract.
Right, you would have that language in the contract, or you could wait to actually transfer the property till April 1st, there's a variety of ways to handle it, but either way, the, the commitment we made to the daycare remains intact, and this is just a technical legal matter that we have to just declare it surplus, stating the reasons why we are, we are...
For the swap?
Right.
And when we do this contract, we're all going to vote on it as a board? This contract with the swap, when we're gonna put in that we are...
I don't understand the question.
What did you just say? When we write the contract for the swap, we will put in that contract that they cannot take?
Well, any, any contracts that deal with the property are all board decisions, so you'll be, you'll have plenty of time to review the language, ask questions, and like I said, anytime you don't feel comfortable, you know, you know, you can wait till...
Is that all true, Jason?
You can wait till, you can wait till April 1st.
The IGA will be distributed, viewed, actually has to be voted on by both the village as well as the township, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if we vote on this now, that we can make sure in the contract that it is...
This does not, unless I'm wrong, this does not obligate us to sell.
Not at all, this is just a condition preceded to entering into an IGA with the village, that's it.
So the village is doing this, the village is doing the same thing on their property across from the post office?
Yes, correct, the, they're not doing the same thing, because they don't have to declare their property surplus, I don't think is a technicality, the township does, but they will be, the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement will essentially provide for the exchange of Chelmsford, we will get their property. In order to do that, the township has to follow the code and has to get their Chelmsford surplus.
Any other questions? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve Resolution 2017-18?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Graffia, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, so we have the bid openings for 401 Golf Road, after they're open tonight, we'll give them to Steve Stoner, our broker, to analyze, and we'll review next weeding at the, next Wednesday at the special meeting. All right, so we'll start off with 401 West Golf, okay, so a bid is, if you want to look at that, submitted by 501 West Golf LLC.
This right here, 405 West Golf LLC?
Yeah.
Right.
I can give it to you later. Okay, Lacy and Associates LLC, 405 West Golf LLC hereby submits its bid of $245,000 for the above referenced property, including this big package, our purchase and sale agreement executed by Anthony DiMucci, manager of the bidder, post-closing occupancy agreement executed by Anthony DiMucci, manager of the bidder, signed and notarized bidder disclosure form with attached corporate detail for the bidder, and a bid bond cashier's check in the amount of $24,500. Give that to you, you can give those, we'll make, if we can make copies of that, and then we'll get them to Steve tonight.
I don't know, but was there only one bid?
No, I'm sorry, I apologize, only one bid for 401.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, we have three bids for 2,400, South Arlington Heights Road, this first bid, Insight Real Estate.
Insight?
Insight, I-N-S-I-T-E Real Estate. Let me see here. I don't know.
They've already made it, they've already sent out a bid.
Trying to see where it says anything. This is information about the company. Where is it at? Okay, there we go. Purchasing entity, Insight Real Estate Investment Properties LLC, purchase price $980,000, earnest deposit 10%, and then, okay, all right, there's that. HVAC Equipment Sales LLC is the next one. See it?
What was that down?
This is from the Secretary of State. This is the, this is the rental terms, this is the rental terms here. Hey, Steve, could I get you to take a look at this real quick? See if I'm, see if we're missing it. Oh, here we go, there's the second part, I apologize. Long day, okay, um, so HVAC Equipment Sales LLC, the purchase price of, is eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Can you indicate the cashier's checks that are with those?
I'm sorry?
Cashier's check.
Can I say that again?
You can indicate them.
Oh, so the cashier's check for HVAC, um, equipment sales was one hundred thousand.
And what about the previous?
It's twenty-four thousand five hundred.
I don't know, from Insight?
Oh, Insight, Insight. Yeah, I didn't, I don't, I don't know if there was one, I don't think there was one. I think there was just an earnest money commitment on...
Yeah, ten, a ten percent earnest deposit, but the check's not here with it.
So is it valid?
I don't know, is it valid?
Yeah, we'll, 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 yeah, I don't, we...
So the bid is not valid if there's no check? Okay.
Is there a check?
No, there's not a check, nope. All right, and then CBRE is the last bidder for twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred, oh, for tw- the property.
What's that?
She's already in the Caribbean.
So am I, unfortunately, I'm not going.
Okay, so CBRE, purchase price, total purchase price is two million four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Two million?
Two million four hundred and sixty-six thousand.
I'm looking to see if there's a check here, too. Yeah, no check here either.
Okay.
Steve, did you, did you talk these guys?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, yeah, that's a business card, so. What's that?
Show me the money.
Okay.
Is there a check?
There's not a check. Okay. Okay, so any questions about the bids? I said we'll have them analyzed, make sure that they meet, meet all specifications, and present, and we'll, Steve will present the bids next Wednesday.
Can I, can I just double check? You can't accept a bid without the check, correct?
That is, yeah, I mean, that's right, we have to look at, I just have to remember what the bid document, we have to double check what the bid documents say, I don't remember off the top of my head, but we will...
So we'll have to, we'll have to review the bid document, what they were actually informed they needed to do, and then the board can accept or not accept a legitimate bid.
Right, so they have to be a legitimate bid, so we'll pick out of the bids that are legitimate, assuming they meet all bid specifications, the board can take action on any, any of those legitimate bids, and we'll discuss next Wednesday. Okay? Okay, um, so, wanted to ask the board to approve funds for annual Christmas party up to, not to exceed two thousand dollars, for food only, no alcohol, for staff, for, yeah.
The invitations have already gone out, right?
Right. Can I have a motion to approve that expenditure?
How come you don't ask us before you to put the invitation?
Well, we've, we've had Christmas parties before, it never had been an issue, and then just in light of just recent meetings, I just decided that I'd bring it to the board, that's all.
This is for the staff Christmas party.
I move we approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved by trustee Kishava, seconded by trustee Graffia, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishava.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nurdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Graffia?
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Okay, any other items to come before the board?
Yes, we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just have a question, 'cause didn't our bus driver resign in August, and we don't have one yet?
Uh, we had extended, we had interviewed people, we extended an offer to one person that fell through, so we're, we're trying to get, make the best possible hire, I'd have to go back and look at the day that she resigned, I mean, she gave us less than, less than a week's notice, so.
Yeah, I think it was August.
When the one driver fell through, it was a driver, it was high quality, she was great with people, was driving for a meetup, she just had to take her test with the Secretary of State to drive the larger vehicles, and she was not successful in taking that, so it delayed us, and now, so we went far and wide to try to make the best possible hire that, hire that we could, so it's taken a little bit of time, but we're managing.
And when did that fall through?
Um, I, I'll go back, I can go back and look at all the dates.
Okay, can people still apply for this?
Uh, we haven't hired anybody, absolutely, if somebody's interested, sure.
Okay, I just had one other thing, this mail, my mail, there's like four invitations in here, one I missed, one I have to tell tomorrow, three of them are next week, not that I'm gonna go to all these events, but I'm requesting right now officially, very carefully explaining, please forward my mail to my house.
I mean, there's no way you could come up or call to see if you have mail, and just stop by once a week, or every two weeks to come in?
No, I cannot.
So we're not packaging things up to mail mail?
I think really it would not be much cost to just send this to me.
So at any, so at any...
Maybe every other week.
Every other week, okay.
Please do it, okay, I keep bringing it up, and here I am.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Just open mind. Anything else?
We really have to discuss the daycare vouchers.
We do.
And we were going to have a committee of the whole, and we're not moving on this, and we're getting close, so.
Okay.
I would like this brought up at the next meeting.
Okay.
And also regarding the agenda, considering that the authorization for the bills is the number one job of the trustees, I would like to have it further up on the agenda, perhaps after the minutes.
Can you do that, George?
Yeah.
Just a quick question on that bus driver.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, where would you find the job description of what you need to apply?
Was it posted in the Tribune, the Herald, I'd have to go, we, we could send it out to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
We have the internal, what we sent out, we sent out the job postings, so we can get that to you.
And there's one more item that I'd like to be discussed at the December meeting.
Yeah.
I'd like to know, I was reading this, I thought it was that Paul fell only under you, but it says here in Illinois Code Section one slash one hundred dash five, that the administrator is at the pleasure of the board, not just under you, okay, so when we ask him a question or something, he seems reticent to answer us, do you know what I mean, and I don't know what the issue is with that.
I mean, I, I don't know of any instance in which Paul hasn't provided answers or information to anyone who has asked.
Well, I direct, for example, I directly asked him, two months before the conference in Springfield, to sign me up, and he never did it, and a few days before, or, I don't know, four or five days before, I found out I was never signed up.
Yeah, I know you, you had come in to talk to Paul about that, I think the email was sent out on July twenty-first to all elected officials.
I went to him.
To send, just...
And I told him to sign me up.
I appreciate that, so what, the process we had, because everybody, some people go to Toys, some people don't, how long they stay is all different, so what, the email was, Mary Ann had sent out to all elected officials, asking if you wanted to go, not if you wanted to go, if you wanted staff to register you to complete the form, so that we knew what days you were going, and what we needed to register you for, so that's...
I did tell him when I was going, I told him personally, okay?
I'm just saying, we asked the elected officials to complete the form so that we had it in hand, and there were no, there was no confusion about what exactly you were registering for, that's all.
Okay, I would also like to know for all the town employees, because according this, obviously, you have total say over GA, but the township board may employ and fix the compensation of township employees that the board deems necessary, excluding the employees of the offices, of general assistants, and township collector, et cetera, et cetera, but I'd like to know in these positions, whatever positions there are, what are all of Paul's duties, what are Erica's duties, I'm much more familiar with hers, what are, what is Debbie doing, what is Mary Ann doing?
We can definitely get your job description.
So, would like to know the duties and everything of each, okay? All right, that's it, for me.
So at the December sixth meeting, we're gonna review the bids.
Correct.
And make decisions?
Possibly make decision, I mean, you, yeah, you'll make a decision either way, you wanna move forward or not, yeah.
Well, if you want a meeting on the, on the tenth, I'll be back the ninth, but I don't think anyone wants the Sunday meeting.
Yeah, Steve recommended we have it sooner than later, just because...
He's concerned that you're not gonna get it done before the end of the year.
That's fine.
I won't be here either, okay.
Okay, any other issues? Did you get, did you get all those agenda items?
Yeah. Just one last question, you wanted it moved up after the minutes?
After the minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you, George.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kishava.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Saturn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.